Was really a good training.
Where was that, was it?
Warburg Avenue, DPW. We're getting to be quite the... I mean, Menloaska we went to.
Oh, yeah.
That rescue up there we were involved in.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, it almost killed me.
How did you almost die?
Trails to me are flat creatures that are pebbly, not at Menloaska they were.
But you don't do hiking or anything?
I'm in pretty good shape. I ride, over the summer, I ride between thirty and eighty miles a day. Again, I didn't know what Gertrude's Nose was like. I will go up there next spring and learn more about the environment. And we did the, uh, they made a ranger trail. Do you know what a ranger trail is? They GPS you from the carriage path to Gertrude's Nose, the fastest way through the woods.
That would seem to me like your home.
So, I had been teaching in Woodstock. I hurt my back. I was getting ready to leave out there, I'd go from there to my house, picked up my chief's car, went all the way up to Menloaska, got driven two and a half miles back. And then, they took, we had to walk the rest of two and a half miles. And then walk back down, yeah.
I know I was gonna call you today. Two questions. I know, I just didn't have time today.
Mr. Arami, how are you?
This, this, 2018 is on here, man.
Actually, there was one.
Oh, damn, with the big guy, that's a good guy. There's two there, can you get them to?
My cousin.
Is he Tony?
Yeah.
Second, third cousin. He had a good sense of humor if I remember correctly.
I really didn't.
Who's that, Tom?
That guy that got shot. The gentleman that got shot.
Oh, really?
What, we got a special finance meeting?
My legs are sore from.
By the way, I understand the finance, the special finance meeting, which I hope will, should be, but I understand it's been changed to six o'clock on Wednesday.
Well, it's gonna be at six thirty.
This, the finance, the budget meeting is at six thirty.
I may not be able to make that. I may not be able to make that.
What, open?
No, at six o'clock.
But I might not, I might not be able to make it.
The subject is first instance of expenditure of grant monies.
Is, uh, this, this Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This, this Wednesday. So that we can vote on it the following week and get, get a contract signed and they can do the survey work before the snow falls.
The planning, well, the planning board is meeting at six that night.
Planning boards meet at six, we got this at six, I never know how.
Somebody changed the finance meeting to six. I don't know if it was Lisa or Jim.
Well, it could be at six thirty.
Just the special meeting.
That's just a special meeting, you're right.
If I just approve a, a grant process?
Who's on finance?
Kristen wants it so that the contract can be signed at the, at the.
I'm on finance. I might not be here. I got.
Doug, if I, I can fill in for Tony at six, I'll come.
If I'm, soon as, if I get back.
Can you make the budget meeting?
Cross country sections at Bear Mountain.
Yeah.
I think I should be.
Make the what?
Budget meeting, six thirty?
Six thirty, yeah, but I, I planned another meeting earlier that day, specifically thinking that we're gonna meet at six thirty. But I'll, I'll see.
Let's grill the fire chief.
Let us please come to order.
Yeah, enough of that, let's, let's get this going.
Purpose of this meeting is to discuss the, the budgets of the fire department and building code and examining board and plumbing code and demolition and zoning. So, let's start with, Mark, with you, with the fire department. Uh, as you notice with format of this where we can look at the, uh, the same as we did last year, just, just. To list the barriers between prior to put your budget and this year budget. So, anything with a parenthesis means it's unfavorable, what I call bad news. Either it costs more than you think it's gonna cost, or you don't get the revenue that you think you're gonna get. That's what a parenthesis means, so, same as last year. Patrick?
Uh, at the last meeting, uh, we seemed to go back and forth through pages, through line items. If everybody could just state the line item they're at and what they're talking about and the page that they're on, it would be a lot, um, it would go a lot smoother, I think, and quicker than it did, than our last meeting.
I will try and give the sheet number and the page number. So, we're starting with sheet one, fire department, which is page ninety-three in the budget book. And we could start with personal services, uh, the thing that stands out is a hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars unfavorable. And I presume that's due to the, uh, ink, due to, uh,
Contractual.
decreased headcount.
That's, that's, that's favorable.
Favorable.
Favorable, I say unfavorable.
You said unfavorable.
Favorable, favorable, yeah. Favorable.
So, we got the page numbers, but he cares about the dollars.
That's a couple letters.
But you always know the page number.
It's a U and an N.
Why quibble?
You know the page number.
All right, we do.
And, but I presume that's, tell us about that.
Well, what's happening is the department has gotten older, officers are retiring. As officers retire, I have cut the officer levels down. We used to have six deputies, now we're down to four deputies. So, when you get people that have been on job twenty, twenty-five, thirty years to retire, you're starting all over again with lower pay scales and thus, one-on-one line comes down. Dropping two deputy chiefs saves you a lot of money. We, we didn't need them anymore, there's no need to have them. So, we're down to a minimum of four deputies, which is really all we need.
Just, just to be clear though, in terms of like firefighting personnel, you're still at the same level?
Correct.
You're down two positions. One position is a secretary, uh, in total, right? So, there's some realigning of the firefighting positions. You're now a secretary and also the, um, there's one position that was previously budgeted to fire department, um, has been now shifted over to building department. So, we'll get that, into that when we're over building department. If you recall, uh, uh, it was W B Chief, uh, Pontiano, who was with the city and his salary was budgeted in the fire department. Uh, there's now a position over in the building department that, uh, is in, uh, building department management in, in Steve Knox's area. And so, we've added a position over there, so that, those are the two, uh, positions that will come.
So, your typist was cut and then it's basically a transfer from fire department into building.
And then, as a chief said, there's some realignment between the different firefighting and, uh, positions themselves.
So, net, net between the two departments, you're down one.
Well, we'll get into that here. You've moved one from this department over to building. It's a different position. It was a deputy chief here, it's the assistant director of building and zoning over in the building department. Uh, you're down to senior type position here. And then, there's some other changes personnel wise in the building department. But within this department, one of the positions is, just because it's been three in line over the building department.
So, within personal services, that's the big driver.
Correct, those two.
They arrest their longevity pay overtime. I'll put some pages there, but the net, net in, uh, personal services of all those line items is a favorable a hundred ninety-two thousand fifteen dollars.
Why is it up? Overtime's up, Brownie, chief?
I can't, I, overtime is overtime. I mean, I have a ten man minimum contractual that I have to meet. Uh, currently, right now, I have one guy on two oh seven A and two guys out sick. And I have to fill those positions whether they're or not. Um, that's, you know.
So, chief, um, you have ten men, is that what you said?
Ten men, minimum.
Minimum? How many men you have total?
On each shift, twelve.
No, total, you're in the whole department?
Fifty-two. Well, no, it's not even fifty-two right now, it's fifty. It will be fifty-two, I'm down two.
We, we have been running over a bit in the overtime, we're using the, uh, some surplus in the regular pay line from delays in backfilling positions to cover overtime. Uh, so, you know, we're trying to build the overtime budget back up. Right now, we're two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars here to date. Last year, we were at three seventy.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. It went down quite a bit from last year, but are you gonna be closer to that? Like, why, why did we budget for that?
Number last year?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, these numbers are assuming that, uh, you're gonna be fully staffed the whole year. So, what happens is invariably is that you'll have, you know, you'll have gaps, uh, between, you know, when an employee leaves and when you backfill the position. So, when that happens, you're filling positions with overtime, uh, but at the same time, you also have savings in the regular pay line. So, what happens is.
And benefits.
Yeah, so, you know, you'll see, middle of the year, end of the year, fire departments traditionally transferring money from the regular pay line over to the, to the overtime line, potentially the comp time payout line, um, and they tend to offset. But, that being said, the overtime has been running, uh, you know, trending over three hundred thousand, so we're trying to get a little bit more money in the overtime line.
Chief, is that spread out amongst the, your employees, um, in any way, in a particular way? Or do the guys who work certain jobs get most of this?
Well, no, it's, overtime is filled on a rotating basis. So, the, the shifts are listed, the twelve guys are listed, from senior to junior. So, as overtime positions come up, it's done on the, on their day in the work, they would work two days after on overtime and it goes right down the list. So, as it goes through the list the first time, a guy can refuse, or he can take the overtime, so it just works down the list. When we get through the list and there's still spots left, now, now you go back to the top and the guy's ordered back. You're ordered back, you have to work. I'll, I'll give you an example of how that works. The other morning when we had the Alzheimer's patient missing, I come into work, K P D had requested us to the scene. I automatically held the guys that already worked twenty-four hours to send them down to search and kept the guys to cover the city. So, in my job, when you pick up the phone and you're ordered back, you can't say no, you have to come back to work. That's just life of being a firefighter and life of being a police officer, I imagine. But it's done fairly. There's guys that take overtime, there's guys that don't, you know? There's guys that'll get overtime and they'll do what's called a mutual, they'll get somebody to work for them, because they just don't wanna work the extra hours.
John, did you, did you say we are currently at three seventy-five?
We're currently at two eighty-five.
Oh, two eighty-five, oh, geez, that's, where'd I get three seventy-five?
As we get younger, that overtime line should go down. What happens is, the newer guys that get the job, they don't take off as much, they, they wanna be there. The older guys tend to wanna not be there as much, so, and they get hurt more.
And they have more time too.
Correct, they have more time to take off. The newer people, John will tell you, that's why it's trending down this year, is because we have more younger guys. Keep in mind that there's two more guys gonna get hired probably this month, that's gonna be two more guys on shift, overtime goes down again. And that, that's just the way it works. The more, the more we get younger, that overtime line will go down.
All right, so, I got, that really, that doesn't change my, my question being, is the three hundred a realistic figure? I mean, if we're at.
It, it's probably, it's probably a little light, but by the same token, the, your regular pay line is, is, uh, assuming that you're gonna be fully staffed the entire year, which generally doesn't happen, you have breaks in service, so, um, you know, to give you an idea, the regular pay line, just to kinda walk you through it. You know, the regular pay line, um, we're at two point seven right now and the budget's three, three million five sixty-nine, so, um, you know, we're gonna be, I'd have to bring this out, but I think we've got five, we'll be several hundred thousand dollars under budget regular pay line.
To, to answer your question, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a roll of the dice.
Right.
You know, I mean, did I expect to have a guy have to get injured and, and have a full hip replacement? No. It's, unfortunately, at our job, accidents happen. It's, it's, it's just part of the job. I mean, I wish I could sit here after thirty-four years and tell you I never got injured in a fire, I did, numerous times. It's just the way it is, you know? You get a fire and things happen that we can't predict. I can't predict how many guys are gonna go out injured, I can't predict how many guys are gonna get sick. It's, it's a, it's basically tough to do. I mean, I've tried to hold the line, that's why other parts of my budget are down.
But you're, you're gonna finish over two hundred thousand dollars under budget regular pay, so, this year as an example, where, you know, any of which overtime will be able to be covered through regular pay.
Are we still in?
Yeah.
Personal? I'm just going down where my questions are, but I'll wait till we get to expenses.
Okay, all right. Personal services, any other questions? Equipment, you know, uh, line nine two oh three, not buying any more vehicles next year.
Got a capital requirement, so it is capital.
Well, that's a note. Line nine two oh three.
Nothing to ship. No, no new vehicles, just in capital.
You bought one last year, right?
I bought two cars last year.
Yeah, we'll get to the capital request.
Both for you?
One for me, yeah. I bought a new car last year for me. I rode around in a Jeep.
Don't you need a new one this year?
No, I don't. That one'll last another twenty-five years, trust me.
Ah, nice new one would be nice.
Okay, moving on to contracted services. Employee training, line nine four four, four one four.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I have five recruits that have to go to recruit firefighting training in February. Each one of them is six thousand dollars. I don't have a choice. OSHA, NFPA, and state all mandated, so there's thirty thousand of that right there. So, that leaves me ten thousand for regular employee training, basically.
So, is the still, the train is still up in Elmoira or whatever?
Uh, yeah, Montour Falls, eleven weeks they go.
How can you bring down regular employee training, twelve thousand dollars? Cause that doesn't add up, right? Cause last year you spent twenty-two thousand on it.
I sent guys to Montour last year.
So, it doesn't normally cost twenty-two thousand.
What, what line are you referring to?
Still talking about your four one four?
Four, four fourteen, yeah. Every time I send somebody to Montour now, it's six thousand dollars and it's something I'm forced to do, I don't have a choice. Matter of fact, right now, it used to be when I got the job, you could just hire somebody, put them on a fire truck, say, follow that guy, we did it with Tony. You know, you can't do that no more. The state says, uh-uh, you gotta have some type of fire management training before you get shoved on a fire truck. So, basically, that's why there's two vacancies, cause I couldn't, there's nobody on the list that I can take and put right on the job, so, I'm holding off until I can send them to the fire academy. Eleven straight weeks at the fire academy, and trust me, they'll love me after that.
Yes, suicide, yeah.
I've been, I was waiting for your questions on that, by the way. That is a pretty hefty.
If you look at the budget on page ninety-three, you'll see the total of the contract expense spending is three seventy, two thousand eighteen, the budget. Nineteen is four eleven, the budget for twenty is four eighteen seven, so, the history of the spending for the fire department's been pretty consistent with budget. Much movement in contractual expenses.
Vehicle maintenance there, you're up to like fifteen thousand. Which, what are we talking about? What's, what's breaking down?
Well, right now, everything's breaking down except the new rigs. I mean, I got two new rigs, they're not breaking down.
All right.
Um, I, I can tell you that it went up a little bit because, um, number one is, some of my plans that I tried didn't work, you know? DPW's too busy, um, you're gonna have to turf this out and I talked to the controller about it and I talked to the mayor about it and we just happen to have an E one dealership right in our backyard. And we own all E ones, so who better to send it to than, than the guys that built it? So, I send everything to Premier Fire now. I can guarantee you that my rigs are OSHA, NFPA qualified, they are up to date in everything possible because I don't like my guys riding around a thirty ton rig without brakes or, you know, it's a safety issue. So, I upped it a little bit because it costs a little more now to maintain the vehicles. They're all computerized, they all have bells and whistles that I can't even describe to you.
Well, that's what the other departments so far have come to us and said that, you know, they had to increase their vehicle maintenance cause it wasn't realistic, what, what was being the budget. So, that's, that's why I brought that question up.
Yeah, even at that, I mean, if you took your vehicle to Toyota or Chevy or Ford, you're look, you're looking at a hundred bucks an hour for, for maintenance and I pay ninety-two, which I don't think is that bad, when you're talking about a, you know, a big fire engine that has so many computers on it. That ladder truck uptown has three computers on it, three computers, and it, I don't even know how they talk to each other. But if you tried to put that ladder down and move it towards the, the cab, it won't hit the cab, you know why? It'll stop. If a jack comes off the ground, it shuts down. Everything is safety, safety, safety. And the more safer we build them, the more complex they are to fix, that's the problem.
Line four seven two, contracted services is down.
That's good.
That's good for the line.
You want me to explain that to you?
Yeah.
Well, we used to come, uh, years ago, before I was chief, I think mine even before John was coming. Uh, there was, uh, the fire department got rid of their dispatchers. Um, one dispatcher was sent to county control and the city assumed a seventy-five thousand dollar fee every year to get dispatched. With the help of, uh, legislator, uh, Waltman and me complaining every year, they're gonna release us out of that. So, it's sundown out and pretty soon there'll be a zero line there. So, it's starting to decrease every year. And that's a, a big savings for the city, seventy-five thousand, that's a good savings.
So, so, so this is through at nine?
Nine one one.
One, up at the county?
Yeah, they will continue to dispatch us. However, still, like, when they get in a bind like the other night, they'll call us and they'll say, look, you know, we're, we're twenty-four calls behind, can you guys pick it up? So, I'll bring a guy in or I'll go in and, uh, we'll pick it up. But for the most part, we have a very good relationship with them. I mean, we now have Fire Mobile in all our rigs, which means we have computer aided dispatch. It's, it's a good arrangement, it's a very good arrangement.
So, it's gonna continue to go down?
So, it's over, it's over three years, right? So, it'll be fifty thousand. Twenty, twenty-five thousand the year after, it'll be zero the year after.
So, next year, fifty thousand?
Yeah, for twenty, right, for twenty, and then following year, twenty-one, it'll be twenty-five thousand, following year, it'll be zero.
So, that's it on contracted services? Employee benefits, basically all contractual. But that's down a little bit, six, six, eight, nine, driven again by the, oh, wait a minute, you do have some, some high retirement costs, that line eight thirteen. And that's the retirement of who?
That, that's just the retirement system cost, that's just a actuarial, uh, calculation by the state retirement system based upon the composition of our members of the department. Uh, we get a, we get an estimate from New York State every year and, you know, which gives us our rates. So, then we determine what the average rate's gonna be for our, our department for the following year, so, uh, with both police and fire, we had to increase the rate in the budget for two thousand twenty. The rank and file, general government, uh, we're able to bring the rate down, so.
Okay, so, total expenses are down two hundred seventy-two thousand thirty-seven dollars. Revenues. Also, uh, down, also federal, four, four, five, eight, nine, the federal assistance.
That's the C for grant.
The what?
The C for grant. Basically, the staffing grant to the fire department.
Yeah, uh-huh. Was that only for one year?
Three.
No, it was, uh, you know, three years.
Three?
Yeah, it's over.
So, that's gone now.
Uh, this is the last year, but we pay the most this year.
It trickles, it trickles, I think, a little bit into twenty-one.
Basically, the first year you get free, the next year, they pay fifteen, and then the last year, they.
So, total revenues down seventy-eight thousand dollars, expenses, sorry, expect, uh, revenues get down seventy-eight thousand. Spends down two hundred seventy-two thousand, so the net.
Talking just to blow that out.
Total, only ninety-three thousand eight hundred one six dollars.
You want me to speak on that? You may not like what I'm gonna say. You want me to speak on it?
Speak on what?
Revenues?
Yeah.
Historically, we are not a revenue department. It's, it's very difficult. I used to run the training center and I could make a lot of money for you teaching CPR. And John will tell you, I did it very profitably, but unfortunately, as fire chief, I can't get out there and teach CPR all the time anymore, I have to run the department. And nobody else is willing to put the time in it that I was, and I did a lot of it on my own. It's not easy to do, it's a lot of record keeping, it's a lot of hours away from your family, it's three hours, four hours of class. Then you gotta go back and do all the paperwork and print the cards and not a lot of people wanna be as involved. I loved CPR, I'm that type of guy, I really got into teaching. You know, maybe when I retire, guys can make a deal with me. Right, right now, it's not, I just don't have the time to run the department and teach. It, it gets very hard to do that, so, I mean, that was probably our strongest revenue, wouldn't you say, John?
Uh, yeah, I mean, once again, you're, you're not a revenue department, I mean, the building department brings in revenue, but the fire department itself really is, like, training fees. Aside from grants, obviously.
I mean, I, I try to get revenue, I mean, there's a lot of other departments that do things that I don't agree with. I know, last year when I was here, guys asked me about, uh, charging for false alarms. It's my opinion, as a, as a guy that's been in the fire service his whole life, if we start charging people for false alarms, then they're not gonna put alarms in their buildings. And I would rather go to a false alarm than have somebody die in a fire because they were afraid they were gonna get a, a fee for putting an alarm in. And ninety percent of the alarms that we get that are false, you're not gonna be able to charge a nursing home or a senior residence because it, it's not prudent to do that. I mean, I just think we want people to do fire prevention, so if you want them to do it, why would you fine them for doing it?
Chief, I mean, I don't, I don't have any idea how much revenue we were realizing from the CPR training. Would it be worth exploring the possibility of hiring someone to do that? Would it be worth our while? Is it that much revenue?
I mean, it was twenty-five, what did I peak about, John? Twenty, twenty-five, thirty, in that range?
For the training?
Yeah, you'd have to go back, way back. I mean, you'd have to go back in time, cause, I mean, I've been chief seven years. And I tried to continue to do both, but it, it gets to be, you know, you're working an eight hour day and nine times out of ten, I'm never out of there on time. And then I have to, you know, I still do all the parks and recreation, uh, summer camps for free, I do all that stuff. You know, I come in and do that for, for Kevin and that. I still, any city employees, I'm, I've taught at city hall, I try to, I'm still an instructor. If anybody wanted CPR, we'd gladly do it for them. It's just that it's hard to put together classes and the, the heart association just wants so much paperwork, I mean, it's.
The, the training center hasn't been over five thousand dollars in a number of years, it's going back to before two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, once I gave it up.
Is there then a lack of training in CPR?
Oh, no.
Okay, there's other people who are filling in?
Yeah. What's happened now is, again, online, people can take a CPR course online and all they have to do is call me and I observe them doing their, their skills and if I say their skills are okay and sign off, I'll take it apart.
How do you resuscitate a computer?
You throw it out the window.
Just watch that spitty blue thing.
What is that blue screen?
Okay, bottom line, your favorable, one hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred twenty-six dollars. Any other questions on the budget itself?
That took a long time, it's almost eight o'clock, holy kidding. I said, jeez, that took a long time.
Clock is wrong.
Clock is wrong.
Is it not setting?
Oh, it is.
Correct.
Back.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's go to the capital plan.
You told me they might hit the bit.
One very big guy there. We call it Engine Two.
Always there for you, chief. New engine.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so in two thousand thirteen, I became chief of the Kingsafe Fire Department. My first job to anybody that was a member of the economic council then was, I told you that our fleet was aging, not safe, and needed to be replaced. From the time I got on department, we've had five-year plans that have turned into ten-year plans, that have turned into fifteen-year plans, that have turned into twenty-year plans. These apparatus run a lot, we're the only game in town, and they need to be replaced. And Engine Two's just another one in that long line that's gonna start costing me a lot of money because it's got over a hundred thousand miles on it. It's simple. And I mean, you know, people blame it on EMS or they blame it on this. We do a lot of stuff in this city that's not EMS-based, we go on, we help people, we pump out basements, we do tons of different things. You can't suddenly stop that just to save a fire apparatus.
How old is Engine Two?
Engine Two is sixteen years old. We get between sixteen and twenty out of every piece of apparatus that we... And that's pretty good, when you consider most departments are replacing around ten or twelve. So we exceed... We exceed that.
How many engines do we have?
We have three engines.
Three departments?
Three engines. Under, I don't wanna pat myself on the back. We currently have two reserve engines. As you recall, I bought in two thousand and five E-one from New Paltz for seventy-five hundred dollars, which is a real bargain, it had twenty thousand miles on it. And when we closed Engine Six, I kept that engine as a reserve engine. So as engines go out to be maintained, if they're out two or three or four days, which sometimes happens, I just swing another engine into place and run that engine. When we get second, third, or fourth armed fires, the guys that come back man those engines and cover the city. Because what a lot of people don't realize is, just because I have a fire, doesn't mean I have to still, I still have to protect this city. We get four or five calls. Let's say we had structural fire like the other night on Brewster Street. During that time span, we had four or five other calls and we had to handle them. So that's why that is. Engine Two, it needs to be replaced. It's getting older, it definitely has to be replaced.
How old is Engine One? Is that the newest piece?
The new engine is not even a year old.
Yeah, and then Engine Three?
Engine Three will be, it was purchased in two thousand and seven. So you're probably looking at twenty-two or twenty-three to replace that. At that time, though, what's really gotta happen is, we can't do it like this. Because we put strains on the budget by every year purchasing apparatus, we need to get it spread out. And that's what's gonna have to happen. And when we get to a, like, a five or a ten-year plan, we have to stick to it. Like, you know, it's easier for the police department, they're just replacing a car that's, you know, twenty, thirty thousand. I'm replacing things that, last year, this same engine that I wanna buy was four hundred and fifty thousand. Now it's five hundred and forty thousand. Now, some of that's based on the tariffs that recently have been imposed on other nations, and some of that stuff comes in from out of the country. However, I still have to come up with that number.
And are these still, is this gonna be custom-made to some degrees? It'll take like a year for delivery?
About eight months, it'll be an exact duplicate of the one I purchased last year.
So you would take delivery in two thousand twenty?
I would hope to take delivery, yeah, I wanna take delivery in two thousand twenty. I mean, in the minute, the minute that I get the go-ahead from that man right there, I'll be out of premier fire assignment contract, no pressure. Because, I mean, we're in a really good spot. We've done, I feel that we've done a great job with this department in getting it in a really good position with our apparatus. I mean, going to premier fire, getting everything maintained properly. Those engines go out every, every six months and get maintenance now. We're in a very good position, one we haven't been in in probably twenty years. I feel very good about our apparatus now. Come on, nobody's gonna ask me three point seven million, you're gonna pick on me for five hundred and forty thousand.
And what's the gear washing? I just, I think I know what it is, chief.
Okay, so what has happened throughout the years is, more and more, last year I came to you, so we bought everybody's second set of turnout.
Correct.
What's happening is, when you go into a fire, the carcinogens permeate into the coat and permeate into the people. So thus firefighters are dying in alarming rate of bladder cancer. Because that diesel and the smoke and all that stuff permeates into their body. They get lung cancer, they get all, they get breast cancer, all different types of cancer. So the second set of turnout gear gives them the opportunity, when they come back from a fire, to switch into clean gear. The extractors are what they recommend for us to clean. We have two extractors, one at company two, one at company one. The one at company one is almost twenty years old, it needs to be replaced. What an extractor does is it forces all those carcinogens out of your turnout gear, and it stops the guys from throwing turnout gear, taking it home, throwing it into their washrooms, and contaminating their house, basically. Because now they're recommending we don't even carry our turnout gear in our vehicles. Because that's how much full of carcinogens they are. It's very scary, to be honest with you. Probably what's next in my fire station is, turnout gear will not be allowed off the apparatus. When they're building new, when they're building new firehouses now, they build negative pressure rooms for the turnout gear to be kept in, so the rest of the building isn't contaminated. So basically, it's an NFPA requirement that I do this. And it's rather a low figure for the capital, but it's something I need to do rather quickly. And I thought it'd be better to throw it in here, to be honest with you.
So it's gonna be, this one's gonna be in central?
One at company three and one at central, all three stations I have extracted.
Oh, the one here, you're gonna put down company three?
No, I'm buying two. That's two.
Oh, that's two, okay.
The one at company one that's broken, if it's fixable for a lower price, I probably would repair it because this would be the main station, it'd be good to have two down here. But if it's not fixable, obviously, I'll have to get rid of it. These are all things that, by the way, every year, we're gonna have, we're gonna be coming with something new. Because as the fire service gets more scientific, they're finding more and more stuff to protect us. And the more they wanna protect us, I'm gonna try to protect them, because that's my job.
One other thing, what's the, what's the, what's the truck, the year on the truck? The engine or ladder?
The ladder truck is seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen.
Okay, other questions on capital?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Johnny?
Joining, please?
So you don't have an examiner?
I didn't see anyone. Oh, you answered about that, but you didn't answer about shooting that, taking the house and giving up for me the other night?
That's not your department, that's a police department, yeah.
I know, there was a, but still, it scared me.
Yeah, no kidding.
Open your doors.
Jerry, I was gonna do that, but I was afraid that someone would make a bad comment.
What do you know about, what do you know about that?
Nothing. I know that I was going back to work, and I think my wife frowned upon it, so I stayed.
Steve, you have the examining board?
Sorry?
You want the examining board, I can do that.
Yeah, yeah, let's...
No, I'll stand, it shouldn't take you long. Not a big budget.
This is not licensed to sing.
Examining board, you're bringing on some part-time employees?
Yeah.
I didn't know that, sorry. I think we should be clear that what's gonna happen to the examining board, and it's kinda moving down to Steve. The reason for that is, it's kind of makes sense that if you go to get a building permit, you get your electric permit and all that stuff, the city charter says I have to be on that board, which I will continue to be on that board. But all the licensing and B-permits and everything will go through building safety. Because that's, really makes sense.
So who was doing it before?
Me.
If I did two thousand twenty, Steve, you're gonna be doing this, Steve?
That's correct, yeah, our office at Faget and, I guess the mayor was gonna give us a part-time clerk to assist with the licensing of the electrician and the permit.
So it's gonna be a clerk?
It'll be a part-time clerk, yes.
How many, how many part-time employees?
One part-time employee.
Part-time employee, only one?
Just so you understand too, though, it's a, there was a full-time employee, you talked about staffing the fire department?
Please.
Right, the one person who got position that was pulled out, that employee was responsible for this work this now moving out to the building department, so you're losing on one side, you're picking up on the other.
I see. But you're bringing on one part-time employee, what, that's a clerk or a licensing?
Part-time clerk.
Part-time clerk.
So what, if, so I'm looking at the personnel in the building safety, this is, you went from one clerk in two thousand nineteen to two in two thousand twenty.
Well, we're in Department Thirty-six Ten right now.
Yeah? And we're, so I'm just looking for the breakout, when you go position titles. So where is, where is this person at?
The part-timers don't show up on salaries. If you go to page ninety-seven, the budget?
Yeah.
Go to ninety-seven?
Correct.
And you'll see there was no set, there was no personnel there last year. Because that, this work was handled by the secretary in the fire, no, my board. So now that position's been eliminated, now we've had a part-time position to handle this, to help within the building department, and then some of the overflow will be handled by existing building department personnel.
So the part-time employee doesn't get any benefits or anything, right?
Uh, they don't get hospital medical.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Man down, do we need to call the fire department?
Nah, I'm a trained professional.
Yeah, I don't know what he's doing.
Doing yoga, he's...
So what is this person, this is gonna just handle, everybody coming in for the examining? So this is when people are signing up to take the...
If I could speak on that?
Yeah.
I've been doing it for half a year. I get about twenty, thirty phone calls a week about electrical. So the way it works is, there's always people that wanna be electricians. So there's an interviewing process that goes through the electrical board, and then they get licensed, so there's paperwork there. And the license, there's liability insurance and that that goes there. And in any cities that we reciprocate with, they can come into the city and do electrical work. However, they have to get B-permits. The B-permit is based on what the dollar amount of the project is, and that's another thing you have to do. It is quite an extensive department, more than I ever dreamed. But in the last six, eight months, I've found out that it is pretty busy.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move to the building code, page ninety-eight, the budget?
Sheet three.
All right, Chris, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Building code, bottom line, positive variance at thirty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Started with line one oh one. Regular pay.
Yes.
So you'll see a substantial increase in regular pay. Like John talked about earlier, part of that is because we took one of our, took our part-time clerk and made her a full-time clerk, which was approved earlier a couple of months ago. And the larger balance of that is because of the change of position from the fire department to the building department. So Tom Piano was running the building department. And I think last year, in my budget, I had put in an assistant director's position. Well, actually, it was an assistant director's position, my position wasn't in, in the budget. So when, but I think John and the mayor had me remove the assistant director's numbers from my budget because Tom Piano wasn't leaving until February. So once Tom Piano left, then the funds for his position would move over to building safety. So that's reflected in the number now, so that, that position is permanently in our budget now.
And line...
Okay, I agree. Just for this, assistant director of building slash zoning?
Correct.
Who is that?
Tom Murray.
Tom Murray. And what's his duties?
Well, he's a servant, department head in my absence, but his main duties are building inspections and plan review. Tom basically does mostly a plan review for our office.
Plan review?
Plan review, yeah. Anytime you submit a building, for a building permit, and it has drawings, he's doing the reviews of those drawings.
And he does also building inspections?
Correct.
And you have, and you have, you're also hiding, it looks like another building inspector, and that's the new position too? Or that went from the housing code enforcer?
Yeah, that was just, yeah, that was just a title change.
Okay.
For an existing, a building safety inspector, made her a building, well, code enforcement officer, so. I think it was, it's only a difference of like three thousand dollars, but it allows me to use her and some additional, have her do some additional responsibilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Line one twelve, reduction in part-time employees.
Right, so again, we made one of the clerks that was part-time, full-time, so that's where that deduction is.
So net effect is a cost increase for personnel, seven, seventy-five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. Equipment and motor vehicles favorable, seventy-five thousand dollars, not, no expenditures this year?
Yeah, we're not...
Where did you buy last year?
We bought two, two vehicles last year, two all-wheel-drive vehicles, hybrids?
Hybrids, I suppose, okay. Heidi working good?
Yeah, they work, they work very well for what we use them for, so. I think we get usually about two days on a charge, so, yeah. I think they're working out pretty well.
Let's see, contracted services?
Twenty-six hundred dollars, is it? It's down twenty-six hundred dollars from the revised budget, two thousand and nineteen, from what is recommended.
Oh, four seventy-two.
Four seventy-two, you're down twenty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, contracted services, basically what that was, was, we had, last year, we had a lot of large projects that required us to have a stenographer come in for the meetings, zoning board of appeals meetings, which is pretty costly. This year, we didn't have really a lot of the large projects that were going before zoning board of appeals and with the new microphone system. The recordings are really pretty clear and pretty, pretty good. So we're able to reduce that number quite a bit from last year. But because we have the Kingstonian project landmarks and a couple of the large projects that are gonna be reviewed this year, we may need to bring in a stenographer for some of those, and so many meetings, so we don't wipe out that contractor services fund completely.
Okay, so net savings over last year, almost thirty-six thousand dollars, bottom line, okay. Oh, yeah, I'm, uh... Revenues, line nine, two-five-five-five, building and, what's that, alteration permanent fees? revenues, line nine-two-five-five, uh, building and, what's that, alteration permanent fees, is that alteration, is that what that means?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But the, the big increase, there's seventy-five thousand dollars, you gonna get that?
I, I think, I think we'll, we'll have, uh, I think we'll be able to reach that. Our numbers are pretty, pretty good this year, and I think we'll be a little bit below five hundred thousand this year. So I think we'll be able to, to hit that, that number.
You're gonna hit five hundred thousand this year?
Uh, we'll be a little bit below, I think, five hundred thousand this year.
Okay.
What, what are your re-levis looking like?
The, the re-levis for, uh, uh, this year was about ninety thousand.
Right, so you're, you're at three-seventy-eight now, if you add that ninety, you'll be at four-sixty-eight, plus whatever you take in the rest of the year, so. Pretty ballpark.
Yeah, it'll be close.
What's re-levis, can you just explain that?
Um, so, uh, any, any fees that, uh, were assessed to property owner that didn't pay them?
Okay.
Are kicked up to comptroller's office and they're applied to the taxes.
The comptering's also on that, they had them to-
Okay. And-
Okay.
So the, all three, so it's like somebody, their building, it's like somebody wants to just do something to their house or something? That's where that is, or put a pool or something?
Right.
So that should be, right, you, alright. Thank you.
You mean on building code? Okay, plumbing code, page one-hundred. Looks like you're going from part-time to a full-time person.
That, that-
Full-time, now plumbing inspector.
That, that's correct, um, but, obviously with the amount of building and construction we have going on right now, we, we, we need the plumbing inspector to be, uh, on full-time. We, uh, last year was one of the busiest years through our office. Last year, we did about seven-hundred-and-fifty permits out of our office, that's plumbing, all types of, all of our permits. This year, we're already at eleven-hundred-and-thirty-five permits for this year, so we're, we're probably gonna be looking at about thirteen-hundred permits issued this year, so.
And as to plumbing, electric, all that?
Not electric.
No, okay.
That, electric, we don't issue permits for right now, which, it, we're, we're in conversation about that now, so I think next year, we, no one does. That's a, that's, that's a problem, which is why it, become the beginning of the year, I, it's being moved to building safety so that we can start issuing permits.
So who was doing his position before, before you got, it was part-time?
It was part-time.
And this person was, this whoever it was, was, they, they, they were there, or they, when it came in, when you, you, you guys called them, I don't know how that?
Oh, oh, part-time?
Go ahead, for the final-
Uh, no, he had, he has a set part-time hours.
Okay.
Each week.
Alrighty.
Yeah.
And now these full-time, um, will his time be filled with plumbing inspection, or will he do, be doing other inspections?
He, 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 um, has taken his code certification, so he can do plumbing inspections and he can do building safety inspections also. So if, if he's slow, if we're slow with plumbing inspections, then I can have him do, uh, other inspections too, so. But, uh, he, he'll be pretty busy with the amount of permits that we have out right now.
Keep him busy still.
And with, uh, you know, some of the large projects that we're gonna have next year, he, he's gonna be quite good. Cedar, Cedar Street alone can, can keep him quite good.
But that's just plumbing?
That's, yeah, that's just plumbing.
Tell you what, the permits, overall, the permits, that kind of increase is fantastic, that's unbelievable, so. It made you guys busy, I mean, that's a lot of, if you think about all that, all the progress that people are spending money on their homes and people are repairing, I mean, that's, that's incredible.
It's the perfect kinda hire we like doing because it's necessity, right? It's, we have enough revenue coming in that we need a new employee, it's a wonderful thing. Yeah, I, you can see we're going, I mean, the revenue increase is about forty thousand dollars over last year, uh, projected revenue.
Yeah.
For that position, that's-
So every time, is it different fees amounts, depending on the project, or is it a set, set amount?
Yeah, well plumbing, uh, plumbing permits, there's a base permit fee of seventy-five dollars plus ten dollars per fixture. So when you're doing something like Cedar Street, you know, that plumbing permit is, is pretty substantial, because they may have five hundred, uh, fixtures in that building. You know, so you may be looking at a five thousand, six thousand dollar, just plumbing permit for it.
Is, is there a list of, like, what's, what's out, like, like say a homeowner, if they're doing something in a house, like, what, what does and doesn't need a permit? I'm sure, is that online, is that on the city website?
Um, it, it is, I don't think we have it listed on the city website, uh, unless they look in, in, in the code, they can, they can go to E-code three-sixty and, and pull it up, but.
Okay.
I mean, in our building, we, we do list a few things, but, you know, you, you can't list everything. Have a binder or something that, that thick, you know?
Yeah.
Everything that's on-
We can look up something specific if we need.
Alright, so you gotta increase your revenue so that person, part-time to full-time, it's needed.
Okay. Uh, John, quick question, uh, the relation between lines one-on-one and eight-twenty-one, hospital, you're paying a, a full-time person forty-seven thousand one hundred eighteen dollars. To support that person with medical is over thirty thousand dollars, is that?
Uh, yeah, that's the cost of, uh, the night shift family plan, if that's the plan they choose, uh, yeah.
No way around that, it just seems like a high-
This is contractual. Um, they have, well, once again, I mean, they, they have the choice essentially between two, two family plans or two medical plans.
Union members, I think.
Obviously, they, the family, it's a married couple, they would have to take family plan, uh, unless they have a, uh, health insurance through a spouse, then they could potentially get the bio, but, um, we typically budget the, the family plan.
Mm-hmm.
Until we know otherwise.
Mm-hmm.
Just, I have another, another question on permits. Someone told me, I told them that this was wrong, and I just wanted to make sure that I, I was right. They said like they, they, they got a building, like a permit to do something, I forget what it was. And then when the inspector came in, they said they thought they had to pay it another, for the inspection, but that's not the case, right? If someone's getting a permit and it worked on, and then the inspector looks at it, that's not, that's all part of it, they don't, they don't pay additional to that.
Correct.
Like, I didn't, I didn't think so.
Yeah, they have-
That's what I told them, I said they were, they were misinformed or somebody.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was right.
Is, is it a flat fee for a plumber to come into your house? You want, have a plumber to come in, whether it's a little job or a big job, is it just a flat fee?
Well, there, there's a, there's a base building permit, uh, plumbing permit cost of seventy-five dollars, and then however many fixtures they're working on in, in your home. So if they're doing a new bathroom, they're putting in, you know, shower, and your sink, and your, uh, your toilet, they'd have, it'd be seventy-five dollars plus ten dollars per fixture, so another thirty dollars. So it just depends on how big, how big your job is. So flat fee, base fee, and then however many fixtures they're installing.
Chris, from a personal standpoint, I had a job that I thought was probably gonna be one hour. You know, and it was, it was a seventy-five dollar fee, which I should've been aware of, but I'm, I'm aware of it now, seems like a-
It, it, I mean, not everything, uh, requires a, a permit. If you're doing repairs to your home, then there's, there's no permit fee. But if you're replacing a hot, like a hot water heater, uh, if you're replacing a hot water heater, it, it would require a permit. We didn't used to charge a permit for hot water heaters, but where we found that, uh, there's been a lot of venting issues and stuff. Um, especially with the newer style ones, uh, they're running vents and they're venting them right next to a window, or they're not putting on the safety spill switches, and so we started requiring them, so that we can get in and make sure that they were put in safely.
Okay, I had an older one in place, and I wish they had, they had, they had needed to get a permit, because it was, when the guy came, he said, this is completely unsafe.
Yeah, that was the problem, we were, we said there were too many of them.
They didn't like to slap it on, I don't know, that's actually seventy-five dollars.
What's wrong with the vent being too close to your window?
Because of the gas?
Yeah, the gas can come right back into the-
The gas.
CO can come right back in.
Gas water.
Gas boiler.
Well, that's high limit, isn't it?
Well, I haven't thought of that.
Yeah, it's not for long.
Okay.
Not for long, though.
Yeah. Going out with a pound.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I have my, uh, staff wearing, uh, gas and CO detectors now and stuff, because, uh, we happen to go on a, a couple of, uh, my staff happen to go into a basement, and we're doing a full inspection of, of this basement, and we get ready to walk out, and we look over, and there's about that much of a section of a vent pipe missing, so the heater was just spilling the CO back into the basement, and we're walking around, and, and we could've been like, you know, so now we, we wear, you know, protection and stuff, so.
But here's the grand seat here, Steve, we're bringing on a new person, full-time, eliminating part-timers.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, bringing in a lot more plumbing and license fees, a lot more valuable work, more people, and yet we're, we're gonna be losing more money. Am I missing something?
I thought we were up, up thirty-five, aren't we, thirty-five?
Well, you're, well, you know, one second, I can, Steve can speak to it, but.
Well, I, I, I think that a large part of the increase is because the, the one sa- salary that was being paid out of, uh, the fire department, uh, is now being shifted over to the building, building department. That's where the larks increases.
You're talking-
So we were paying, we were paying, the city was paying that money anyway, it was just coming out of the fire department's budget instead.
I'm just talking plumbing, but bottom line is, we're, we're going down twenty-three thousand dollars, even though, you know, you're not a, a person, I understand that costs money, but we're bringing a lot more license fees, and, you know, maybe a lot of that is that hospital and metal.
Well, that, that, that's all of it, really. I mean, if you take that out of the equation, you're, you're going the other way. I mean, keep, keep in mind two things, I mean, in this budget, just in building, the plumbing code, some of the,
Yeah.
This employee, as Steve mentioned before, will be able to help support the building department, which the revenue will help support a different budget, the three-six-two-zero budget.
Uh-huh.
Um, the other part of it is that while they do generate a substantial amount of fees, the overarching purpose of this building department is building safety and, and, uh, you know, citizen safety, resident safety, it's not necessarily to generate fees, so I don't think that, you know, the decision to go with the plumbing code, to bring that position from part-time to full-time was a, was a fee-based decision. That was a necessity of what, uh, the department felt was needed for, for the services they provide. You know, incidental part of that was that, yeah, we could generate, so we anticipate another forty thousand dollars in fees, it's gonna cost a little bit more than that, um, to bring that, to convert this special department to full-time. But at least the position's partly subsidized by the fees it generates.
I agree, it's a value of service, that's the value, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and even if you look at three-six-two-zero, the, the department, uh, the total cost of the building is six, the department's six-eighty-five, generates five-hundred-six thousand dollars in fees. You know, it's, um, roughly seventy-five percent subsidized by fees, but there's a city share for this service that we provide.
Okay. Okay, anything else on plumbing code? Demolition looks like a block, no change?
Uh, well, we brought it to fifty thousand, well, we, we keep that as a placeholder, um, we just haven't used the, the, that line in number of years, so we, we brought it down. But at least it kept the number in there if we do need to demolish a building, or is there something in there for the department to work with? Yeah, we brought it down full-size, zero point eight five.
Okay. Then on to, uh, are there any other questions on demolition?
Is this not, is this where the money's coming from the knockdown, quote, plan arrangement?
No, that's, that's, that's all the, uh, twenty nineteen.
Chicken wings, you mean, it's cool.
Chicken wings?
Zoning, an increase in expense of one thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars. Part-time employees.
What?
Everything else, it all falls to the bottom. Is that just another lawyer?
Get the hang of it now, Patrick.
I, I got it.
Oh, it'd be the chair, that's-
One-on-three.
The last time you were going back and forth.
Zoning, page one-on-three.
The part-time employee.
There's a small unfavorable variance, one thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars, most of which is, almost all of us, part-time employees, an increase of part-time employees.
Contractual.
Right, it's contractual, yeah, the contractual raise, right.
So where, where is this, so it's another part-time employee?
This, this one already exists, so.
Alright.
We're, we're just talking about the fifteen-hundred dollar increases, the contractual raise.
Okay.
That position.
Okay.
Step and crew.
Is this Eric Kitchen's job?
That is Eric's job.
So what's, what is, is, are you gonna make sure to, explain to me what he does?
He, he's the zoning officer.
Okay.
And it, there's, zoning really doesn't generate any revenue, but, uh, his, his work is really extensive right now.
Okay. Alright.
Definitely, seventeen and a half hours is probably not, not, not enough time and stuff, but, uh.
So that's his job, just to go out and do zoning things?
Yeah.
Then now you, then you're gonna have a full-time plumber that jobs this, all the plumbing.
Correct.
And so the zoning job is a part-time job?
Zoning is part-time, right.
Okay, so that's why it's not on the list.
How many employees are there?
Uh, buildings, in building safety?
No, 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 it's part-time, no zoning.
Just, just Eric?
Huh?
Just the one, just the one part-time.
So it's part-time employee. Okay.
Who was it ordered for?
Um, Eric's been there since January.
Yeah. It's a recent hire-ish, recent-ish hire.
Any more questions for Steve?
Yep.
Anything you need?
Got nothing. I think we're Johnny Wishless. Let's not go there.
All right.
That's the wrong question.
Thank you, Steve.
He, he gives a question there, that's a question there.
Yeah, one thing on my, uh, one thing on my, uh, budget, though, and, um-
I don't have anything on the capital thing.
There.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking for any capital.
No, we're not giving you any.
But my, my employee training number and stuff, I, I'd like to, to go back to, um, kinda what I recommended and stuff, just because, uh, with all the instructors that I have now, um, where is it? Uh, four-fourteen, I think I, I have requested twenty-five hundred.
In which department, building code?
Yes.
Employee training.
Oh, four-fourteen.
Yeah, I requested twenty-five hundred, and, uh, we're, uh, I think, uh, they got knocked to nineteen, but I kinda need the twenty-five hundred, because, uh, five of the employees are, uh, have what's called, called a CEO certification, um, requires twenty-four hours of continuing education each year. So, uh, they'll get nineteen hours at one conference, which is three hundred dollars, uh, per employee, um, and then they'll have to get six more hours in another training, and my, and the other three, uh, building safety inspectors also need six hours of training, which, uh-
So you're talking, the difference is six hundred dollars.
Yeah, so we're talking, I mean, we're talking-
You're saying you'd like to see six hundred?
I, I'd like to see restored, otherwise I'll be asking, I'll be asking you for it later.
Alright.
Alright.
We'll take it from someplace else. You're gonna, you're gonna deliver the mail by feet.
Take it from the fire. The fire department's mark blazer, but, uh, you know, I, I- Mark blast, we'll take it from the fire department.
Alright, so you brought that, the restored twenty-five. We could, I, I'm assuming that's not, that's liner.
Anything else, anybody, otherwise motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Yeah, take it out of the office.
All are favor? Again, see you all at six o'clock on Wednesday for special finance, which will then be followed at six-thirty by Parks and Recreation.
Alright.
Okay, thank you all.
Oh, uh, so one thing that I, I talked to Steve about, I've heard people
What?
Who were saying that there's this new fee that just for the plumber coming to your house, they charge seventy-five dollars per visit.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's kinda what, yeah.
And that's just-
No, I know, that's what I said, I'm telling people, no, that's not, you gotta permit, and then when they come to the inspector- You gotta permit, and then when they come to inspect it, they don't, you don't pay extra, you know? Unless they're talking about some private plumber coming to your house, that has nothing to do with it.
Well, what I'm worried about is that we do have some shysters who are coming, and you're taking this, you know, this, uh.
Scamming people for an extra seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, and saying, oh, it's a new fee, when in fact, it's just, we've got more enforcement of the permit process.
Right.
Right? So that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah.
Hey, um. The numbers now for tomorrow.
Yeah. It's like it's going there at the end, right? And. At the end of the day? Show up at like, uh, in the polls place at nine.
So we're like, what do you do, they, they had the figures there, and I just take a picture?
I'd never. Well, no, they, they will read them out, and so that's why Amy was suggesting you should make a chart in the bank. So, you know, like, um, for Dave Clay, he's on the Democratic line, the Working Families line.
And they'll read off their figures.
And they'll read off the figures.
It's like, they'll just like for DA, blah, blah, they're gonna say DA.
Yeah, they'll say Kavanaugh, Democrats, you write the number down, or, no, I mean, Republicans, Clay.
So what are you thinking, I should be writing what?
I would just look at the, the ballot.
He's pretty.
You know, it's online.
He's feeling pretty.
And then just make a chart, a real quick chart.
It's a ballot online?
Yeah, I think there's a sample ballot.
We'll see what happens tomorrow.
Where am I looking at, City Kingston, no?
No, uh, Board of, Ulster County Board of Elections.
Yep. Good luck to you, sir.
Renee.
Good luck to you, sir.
What are you doing, ma'am?
You can start cooking for noon, you're.
We're only gonna be at five thousand.
That's what I'm hearing, right?
It's supposed to be fifty dollars on the new matter trust, because they will.
I, I, I want your paper to know, I drove by Vinnie Rua's new house this morning at seven AM. His car and his wife's car were both in the driveway.
And the town of Wester?
At the top of, uh, in the town of Wester, at the top of.
Well, why didn't you take, uh, videos of them coming out?
I was on Byway work.
I need, I need to prove it, it's like a compliment.
Right near the stickout.
I am not running the night, man. No, see.
That's why I make sure I have this correct, because I'm not gonna. Do this like, folks get it tomorrow.
I'm in this old store, you don't wanna get there.
Is it under this?
You and my dog.
Yeah, do we know where everyone's going tomorrow?
I wanna make sure I have this stat.
Kiggins.
Do they have a search window on there?
I went to Ulster County Board of Elections, absentee ballots, voter registration. District manager, election results. Inspector's brochure revised. And you guys have, and you guys know where we can go to get a sample of the ballot?
Online?
Online, copy, uh, so I make sure I have it in my thing right when I go in to get these results?
No, wait.
Oh, here we go, click on, go, go back to the thing, their website.
That's the sample there?
Click on their website. And then see the three bars, click on those, see sample ballot there.
All right, so that's what we're talking about. So what I.
Yeah, so see how like, um.
I see state plant, yeah, county, George, county.
Can you take a video when they're reading the results?
No.
No.
He said they can't.
No, so see like county executive, like Ryan is on the Democratic line and the Working Families Party line.
Yeah.
And, uh, whatever this one is down here.
Yeah, so I, I, so I had to say all them, or they're gonna tell me?
They'll, they'll, they'll read them out.
Ryan, uh, blank for Democrat, blank for Working Families.
Sometimes they only say the win, whoever wins, so they say county executive, so-and-so, so many.